Yeah.
Done.
All done. We're five on D and A, we can start, we'll be ready.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I declare the special meeting open. I would like to acknowledge that today we are meeting on the traditional lands of the Kaby Kaby people, and I pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I note that everyone is in attendance and there are no apologies. We have two items on the agenda for today's special meeting. Item one on the agenda is the temporary permit approvals during COVID-19 pandemic. There is a staff recommendation on page three.
And everyone to turn off their phones.
That's a timely reminder, thank you, Brian. Yeah. Look, I'm happy to move the staff recommendation. With the change?
The councillor.
With councillor. Yeah, unless, Brian, you should, you want to move that? You would, you should move that.
Sorry, I've got my phone.
And I'll second that.
It probably was while reading out the change for the people who are looking, if you could scroll down, thanks Cathy. So it is as per the staff recommendation except in item D. And item D would then read, approve the establishment of the COVID-19 event reference group as outlined in the report, whose role will include but not be limited to: One, reviewing and making decisions regarding event application requests. Two, reviewing category three event decision-making framework assessment criteria as outlined in the report. Three, developing a risk-based decision-making framework to guide future event approvals within the COVID-19 environment, which will consider public health and economic impact factors. Four, monitors of success or otherwise of COVID-safe event plans and procedures both within the Shire and external to it. And five, providing advice and analysis relating to the above to inform council's review in February 2021. So councillors, this is a difficult decision in front of us, but I want to put it in the right context. This is a public health decision. We are making a decision about what is normally the largest event on the Noosa calendar, so it does have economic impacts. But the decision criteria must place focus on the community health and our residents. I think it's really important to note, and Cathy if you could bring up the graphic I sent you earlier, that COVID-19 has a disproportionate impact on those who are post-retirement. Our Shire has about 25% of the population in that vulnerable age group. As you can see from that there, the age sex pyramid from 2016, so the wider the graph, the more the people in that particular age group, that in the vulnerable age group, we see the baby boomer bulge going through. And when we look then down at those which are probably the more typical ages of those working in hospitality, who will be, have been impacted by COVID and are likely to continue to be impacted by COVID, you will note that we have a narrowing. But it's important to note that the council's taken numerous steps in all the stimulus packages to target our economic interventions and our stimulus grant programmes to exactly that demographic, to the people who will be, had casual jobs that may have lost them or lost their hours. But when we look at this particular decision, we can easily see from that graphic, it's about making the decision for the common good. So if you want to go to the next step, there is one more important factor, and that is the location where this event occurs, and that's in Noosa Heads. And for, I'm not quite sure if it's still the case in the last census, but for many years, the Noosa Heads statistical district had the highest number of people over 65 in the Shire. So in fact, nearly one in three people in the Noosa Heads area where this event would occur are in the vulnerable age group. So councillors, this is really important to understand, is that this is not a stadium where we can have security guards. It's not an event where we can control the audience by tickets. It's a public event where masses of people congregate in public spaces, which are both used by a range of different visitors and our residents are not necessarily involved in the event. I think it's really important that we do keep the younger generation in our focus as well. And that group that I nominated before might be sitting back here if they're listening, not that many of them do, and be saying, okay, boomer. But it's not just that prism of our generation we need to look through. We need to look through from the greater good for the longer term. So I think it's really now important, and this is the, at the heart of why I've added a few additional criteria for that reference group. Now's the time to be more strategic about how we look at this issue. We've got in this motion a six-month review, and what I've added is some of the things that I think we should be doing in the next six months. It's about looking at the data that is emerging. It's a rapidly emerging field across the globe. And I, at the beginning of this term, said we should get into scenario planning, and I was initially going to include a scenario planning element into this motion, but it would require greater resource allocation. That's something we may wish to consider at budget review too. Because we don't know what's going to be like in February. We could be in exactly the same situation as we are now. It could be a lot worse, or it might be starting to get better. And we over the next six months need to have a system and a risk-based decision framework that can cope with those various scenarios. So the next time we're making this decision, we're making it with both empirical data and evidence base. I think, you know, councillors, we've had a few of their community contact us and we've had a range of business groups advocating on behalf of business. And that's their role, that's their role is to advocate, to make sure that we understand the concerns of business. But I think in terms of business, there's a quick key question to ask. Would they prefer not to have the one weekend or one week bulge of perhaps additional accommodation and turnover during try and risk being closed for Christmas? If there does happen to be a cluster formed as a result of the event? Would they prefer to have enough time so those that may have booked the accommodation now for the try can pull out and others come in to take that particular booking and accommodation? Because what we're hearing is that we're getting a whole lot of the drive market coming to Noosa. And to me, the certainty of your accommodation bookings is also at the heart of this decision. We need to make it now, so it's really clear what the options are for our visitors in the coming months. So for those reasons councillor, I urge you to support the motion.
Thank you. And I'm sure this, everyone around this table appreciates the benefits social and economic that events bring to this community. And today's decision is not taken lightly. But if I can personalise this a little bit, from my perspective, it's about how we as councillors are personally prepared to risk other people's health, livelihoods and lives in the face of a global pandemic, involving a virus that we know is mutating to become more transmissible and causing new outbreaks in South East Queensland. The question is, how much are we, the people around this table, personally prepared to risk Noosa's reputation as a healthy and safe community and visitor destination? Council currently does not have a framework to assess event applications under COVID. And rather than approve on an ad hoc basis, this carefully considered approach recommends a COVID event reference group be formed to assess these applications according to criteria. It seeks to assure the community that risks to their health, their lives and their livelihoods caused by an outbreak will be minimised. It will also provide timely, effective and clear direction to event organisers as to how their events can proceed or not in the short term during this pandemic. This approach is to be trialled and reviewed in February. The state government recently released a framework for the events industry designed to assist event organisers to manage risk associated with transmission of infectious diseases such as COVID. The three-tier framework categorises events based on the number of people attending, and each event must receive state approval or comply with the COVID-safe checklist depending on the scale of the event. The state framework gives direction and clarity for event organisers, but significantly does not offer advice on public liability insurance for COVID as none appears to be available. Nor does the state framework consider the health, social, economic and reputational damage to a community, tourism and business should a COVID-19 outbreak occur as a result of a council-permitted mass gathering. In short, there's no insurance for pandemics. We've also been advised there's no such thing as a COVID-safe event. You can only minimise the risk through COVID-safe plans. And we've learned it's impractical for health authorities or police to be in attendance at each of these events to enforce these COVID-safe plans. Which is why it is prudent to adopt a precautionary approach to mass events in the current COVID-19 environment until February. And until February, approved events are not more than 500 people as a responsible starting point. It's recommended a COVID-19 event reference group be established to assess event applications and monitor until February to ensure an appropriate risk-managed-based approach continues to be applied to events without compromising community health, long-term business and tourism viability. We're all aware of what's happening in Victoria. And as of yesterday, outbreaks in five local government areas in South East Queensland have again restricted informal public gatherings to a maximum of 10, and the health officer is recommending the use of masks. It's easy to understand the social and economic benefits of events, but also the social and economic benefits of ensuring Noosa remains a healthy, safe community and visitor destination, especially in these times. Even with the border closures in place, and if no mass events were to be held in Noosa, it is still possible that an outbreak could occur, causing illness or worse, closing businesses and damaging Noosa's reputation as a safe and healthy community and visitor destination. Common sense and logic tells us that to also allow mass gatherings of more than 10,000 or events over 500 and up to 10,000 increases the likelihood of transmission occurring. So for a council to approve mass gatherings under these current extraordinary circumstances is something I just won't do. The recommendation before us takes a balanced approach to risk management. It allows the community to continue to enjoy their regular sporting and community events and seeks to limit mass gatherings, especially those attracting participants from across South East Queensland where other outbreaks are increasing. Whilst in the midst of a once-in-a-century and highly dynamic global pandemic, it's hard to argue that a council ought to take anything but the most precautionary approach when it comes to issuing permit approvals and therefore condoning and bearing the responsibility for mass gatherings. Yes, there are thousands of people in Noosa on most weekends, but they are generally circulating and spread throughout the whole precinct, not clustered within enclosed areas or at the starts and finish lines of an event. And nor do they require council approval to visit Noosa. And while the state can approve COVID-safe plans for events, the advice is there's no such thing as a COVID-safe event. You can only minimise the risk by healthy practices. And as said before, there are no, there are few or no state or health officials roving about ensuring these COVID-safe plans at mass events are actually enforced. As we've seen elsewhere, an outbreak can occur at any time despite precautions taken. Should this happen in Noosa, you'd want it to be the result of bad luck, not sloppy or short-sighted risk management. So far, due to good management and good fortune, Noosa has remained a safe and healthy community and visitor destination. Retaining its reputation as such will return more in the long term socially and economically than any mass events in the short term. In the unfortunate event of an outbreak from a council-approved event on public land causing illness, business shutdowns or loss of life, this current approach also minimises the likelihood of seeing councillors ducking for cover or not being able to sleep for the rest of their lives under the crushing weight of guilt anyone other than a blame-shifting sociopath will feel. This is not about wishing everyone, this is not just about wishing everyone a happy, safe and prosperous Christmas. It's about doing all we responsibly can to ensure that we will.
And also for the motion. We have a difficult decision about how to proceed with event permits in this COVID environment. How do we assess event requests? How many people is too many people? What are the risks to the business and tourism sector? What are the reputational risks of an outbreak to the Noosa brand? And what are the financial and legal risks to council and ratepayers? We understand the economic fallout, we understand the social cost. But what must come first is the safety and health of our community. This is about lives, not money. Festivals, weddings, markets and sporting events are all part of Noosa's social, cultural and economic makeup. Community festivals strengthen our sense of belonging and place. Sporting events brand us as a desirable destination. Both provide boost to our local economy and encourage us to move forward with improving infrastructure. We recognise their importance. And that is why we will ensure that in whatever format and size these events and festivals are allowed to continue, albeit of a smaller size. No one can change the reality of COVID and the fact that there is still so much uncertainty and risk. Business as usual is no longer an option. And that means mass festivals and event gatherings of more than 500 people at the moment will not be allowed in Noosa. This is to be reviewed in February next year. If we cannot provide a safe environment for participants, volunteers and supporters and manage COVID safety protocols, then we cannot approve an event. If we do not have public liability insurance for COVID, then we cannot approve an event. If there is a risk, no matter how big or small, of another outbreak, then we cannot approve an event. Because a second wave lockdown and a return of restrictions would destroy the livelihoods of thousands and thousands of people in this town, as it did in March 25, 2019, when a small cluster of cases at Sal's Restaurant shut down this town. Another outbreak would destroy our reputation as a safe destination and most importantly, it would put at risk the safety and health of our community. Further, it would expose council to public liability insurance claims that would be funded by ratepayers. I repeat, there is no insurance products that will cover COVID-related claims. You wouldn't travel overseas without insurance, you wouldn't run a business without insurance. So why would council take on increased financial risk by allowing large events to proceed without adequate insurance coverage? It shouldn't. And now let's not forget the what-ifs. What if there is a concurrent natural disaster during COVID, like an earthquake, a cyclone or flooding? Is this community adequately prepared for the complexities that could arise? How would our community and health systems cope if a major natural hazard like an earthquake or cyclone occurs while the pandemic continues? Do we have enough hospital beds? Can we provide communal evacuation centres? And would the disruption to social distancing increase the potential for infection? What we do now will influence the potential impacts of any natural disasters. What we do now will protect our businesses in the long term from closing down. What we do now will save lives and flatten the curve. And that is why now we must act cautiously and responsibly, because it's better to be safe than sorry. So what does this mean to adventure and festival organisers? Is that they must now, for now, rethink how they do business. For example, just recently Tourism Noosa made the decision not to hold the large-scale Noosa Eat and Drink Festival in 2021. Instead, they have reimagined the festival and adapted to these unprecedented times by offering a series of smaller, more frequent Noosa Eat and Drink experiences. Similarly, the Cool and Gatter Gold event that has just been cancelled due to COVID restriction has been reimagined and is going virtual in 2020, enabling participants to complete parts of the race over a 10-day period virtually. Finally, it's important to remember that these event restrictions are temporary. When this pandemic tapers, and it will, events and festivals and the power of celebrating in larger numbers will be part of our Shire's recovery. I therefore support council's recommendation to take a precautionary approach to approving mass gathering events and approving markets and events of not more than 500 people after assessment against a number of risk-based criteria, risk management that protects our community, our livelihoods and lifestyle and our reputation as a safe destination. I also support the recommendation to establish a COVID event reference group.
I believe Noosa should have as much control as possible over COVID safety. And with the small events we can, that is with under 500 people. With the larger events like the Noosa Try, we delegate COVID safety to subcontractors, and this has not worked out so well in Australia. If there is an outbreak in Noosa, it's our elderly and most vulnerable that will be disproportionately affected. While they would have gained little through the big events like the Noosa Try, a COVID outbreak would bring terrible consequences. The greatest Christmas gift we can bring to Noosa is a COVID-free holiday season. Truly, we must do everything in our power to make this happen.
Yeah, look, I'm going to support the staff recommendation. I mean, we're living in a, in some challenging times with ever-changing gold posts. And if we had the, you know, the opportunity of crystal ball and foresight of 2020 vision, I mean, 2020, our vision is far more clouded than, than you can ever imagine. I mean, public health, of course, must be our first, of our community, must be first and foremost in our minds. But also the ongoing, you can hope health of our community with Christmas only a short time away. I think the other councillors have alluded to the challenges that, that an outbreak in Noosa would have to business going forward. Businesses are already challenged, they're already operating under limited capacity. And what we have heard from our accommodation and food and beverage providers is they're able to facilitate the current, the current numbers that are coming as a result of the restrictions that we're in. Victorian situation, the New South Wales hotspots and now the recent outbreaks in South East Queensland that we've seen in our prisons and, what was it?
Government areas.
Thank you. Shows us that, you know, this is easily, easily something that gets out of hand very, very quickly. So to turn around and try to facilitate ongoing mass gatherings when COVID is the challenge before us would only be the potential for a fatal error on our, on our half. But to err on the side of caution, as all the councillors have suggested today, is probably the only way to go. A COVID-safe plan is great, but it will only work if everybody's compliant. And we've seen even from the border closures and the checks that are in place, that there are a number of people that don't believe in COVID, that won't comply with that, with regulation, no matter how well-intended COVID-safe plans are. So compliance is a, is a challenge for all of us. And to turn around and facilitate mass gatherings where, as councillor Stockwell alluded to, they're not in a stadium, they're not, they haven't got ticketing, they're not in a facilitated area. And that people may also come and gather on mass without, without that policing that is required in these sort of situations is something that will only put us at bad stead in the event that an outbreak should occur. And, and the potential for damaging the reputation of Noosa is something that we're enjoying. At least a moderate return of tourism in the COVID-restricting environment on local business and the overall community is something that we can't, we can't put at risk. Entering into the storm and fire season, as councillor Larson alluded to, is another challenge going forward. I mean, we don't, don't want to have a situation where we have an outbreak and then we have a, you know, a firestorm or a cyclone in the region and we've got to accommodate evacuation centres with a COVID outbreak in our community. So we need to act smarter, not harder, and I concur with the staff. Recommendation in this situation for a reference group to look at the means going forward, to monitor the success of otherwise of other COVID-safe event plans and see that they are being successful. You know, it's well and good to have a, have a COVID-safe plan, but is, is it actually working? Should we be the ones to be the guinea pigs to put this to trial? And leave it till February 2021 to see what the, what the ever-changing goalpost will bring for not only our committee but for Australia and, and all the states. Thank you.
This isn't an easy one. As a council, we've had numerous discussions and workshops about this topic. And by the letters and emails received, have heard from our business community and some residents, clear indications as where they stand on the matter. The item on the agenda encompasses many events which in usual years were on our calendar in the upcoming months. Surfing carnivals, Christmas carols by the river and a whole host of other events are now subject to the framework and guidelines which have been put forward by the state government. It is our decision as a council to choose which category we should support on a temporary basis until a review in February 2021. Perhaps the one event which is generating the most interest and which will be affected by our decision today is the Noosa Triathlon, an event which is nothing short of iconic. An event which is the race that may not stop a nation, but indeed it stops a town. We are proud of it, we own it and we've always supported it. Ironman run a terrific weekend and I acknowledge and value their professionalism. But today's decision goes deeper than an iconic event. It goes to the very heart of what we must hold sacred above all else, what we must protect at all costs. Paramount consideration has to be given to the safety and wellbeing of our residents, full stop. This has been a decision which has weighed heavily. I hear the business community, the associations and the chambers. I acknowledge their vital importance to our Shire and I'm fully aware of their position and I appreciate them being so open and honest. I stand with and for small business, always have and always will. But the decision before us isn't a business decision, it's a health decision. As a council, we are not alone in trying to minimise risk to our community. Only recently, due to the increased community transmission within Queensland, school this week has been cancelled, the Cool and Gatter Gold has been cancelled, and the Gold Coast along Brisbane and now Darling Downs are facing increased restrictions. If we as a council allow category one and category two events to proceed, we have an increased risk of community transmission through increased numbers at gatherings. I understand the argument put forward by various groups stating that we, at most weekends, are at our added capacity, generating thousands of visitors. And so the risk is just as high for us then as it is for hosting an event capped at 3,500 people. But the difference is, council are accountable for the events in question. We are the ones who issue the permits. The buck and the risk, quite literally, stops with us. In making this decision, I thought about the what-ifs. What if we say yes to all events, or at least those in the thousands, and large-scale events go ahead, including the try? We have a terrific event, generate heaps of money for our business and tourism sectors and everything goes smoothly, according to plan, just like it does every other year. We have no outbreak at all and we sail right into a Christmas unscathed, terrific. But what if we do have an outbreak? What if, despite the COVID-safe event plans, the COVID-safe practices that have been put in place, the strict guidelines that both the organisers and council have implemented, what if it isn't enough? We can't guarantee the outcome, we can't guarantee the safety of the event, no one can. What if an event results in a cluster of cases? What does that mean? What does that mean for our businesses, for our tourism sector and for our community coming into Christmas? How will we recover for an outbreak? How will our businesses recover or sustain if we have to shut down? Our community survive and our people fare? How will people's mental health suffer then? I have received feedback that we must let the try go ahead because of the mental wellbeing of our community. I understand and acknowledge that. But how will our mental health fare if we have an outbreak and we are all closed down? The average age in the Shire is 47 compared to the state age average of 36. We are high risk and we must take that into account when making any decision. Believe me when I say, I firmly believe in this case, the costs outweigh the benefits of holding larger-scale events. Cancellation and rescheduling is happening right across the board. It's not business as usual. We're in the middle of a global pandemic and we must see our way and our community through it. And we will get through it. The most heartening of words on this agenda item is the word temporary. We will revisit our position in February 2021. We have a better idea as to how the world is faring, how Australia is faring and most significantly, how Queensland are coping. I encourage robust and meaningful discussion at that time with council staff, councillors and representatives from our business sector, chambers of commerce, business associations, as well as key community stakeholders, environmental health officers and many others, as councillor Stockwell has mentioned in his motion, when we revisit this issue in February 2021. There are many more discussions to be had and decisions to be made. I am hopeful that if we continue to reduce the spread, we will be in a much better position to look forward to a bigger and brighter 2021. Until that time, I support the staff recommendation. Leadership isn't easy, decisions aren't always popular. But in this case, we must hold fast to the line, not on our watch, and do all we can to ensure the safety and security of our residents.
First, I'd like to say thank you to all the staff and all the councillors that have worked hard to put forward their arguments and the recommendations today, which I do add, I do support. I do think at this time, we do have to remember the general and the wider community. We're making decisions as leaders for 55,000 population in the Shire and we have to take into consideration all those things. From the day when we started, we're elected into this position, we have made decisions on shifting sands. We have made decisions around impacts that have changed sometimes within 24 hours. We've arrived at this point where collectively, the decisions we have made have seen us in a position where this community has remained safe, has remained a destination where people, health and wellbeing has come first and the economic ramifications have also been carefully considered with all the things that we have put in place at this time to support our business community, to support our aging community, to support our sports clubs and the entire population in all sectors. So I support the recommendations today, I concur with fellow councillors that we will again make a decision that benefits all in these temporary times in a global pandemic. Thank you.
I think it's all been said, but the most important observation is that when it comes to the health of our community, we all, we're all speaking with one voice.
Is your vote all in favour of the recommendation? That's unanimous. Thanks, Clint. Thank you. Thanks, Kerry. Thanks, Dennis. Item two on the agenda is the, at page 15, Planning Environment Court Appeal Number 765 of 2020. The diesel applications are being furthering a lot, one lot into 23 lots, and 28 in Ecre Road, Noosa Village.
Yeah, councillors, we're going to start with the biggest decisions you'll make. The biggest development site and what the plan's going to be in the future years. And staff have had a look at the wording which is in the agenda and made a slight suggestion to make it subject to the, similar to the appeal, subject to the infrastructure agreement and the deed of agreed delivery arrangement being signed by the applicant before we settle in the court. That's normal practice. I had two options, one is to sign before the meeting today, which they haven't yet done, but I think we're better off having that as a cautionary approach to make sure that it settles. So otherwise, the recommendations.
Can I ask a question of the CEO? Just the wording of that change, subject to the infrastructure agreement and deed of agreed delivery arrangement being executed prior to the matter going before. Could you explain what, what that meant, executed means? Does it mean signed? Just means signed. Okay. Not implemented, signed. Thank you.
Have a question just as well, probably Connor or Kerry. Just so I have in my mind, the, just so I have in my mind in terms of the environmental offset policy and what we can and can't do, what we're suggesting is that we, that there'll be a a quid pro quo type arrangement, that over a million dollars for the koala offset, it needs to be spent on rehabilitation, could it go to green infrastructure, improve koala conservation? Is it a, is it a broad, a broad spectrum of what we can do, or if you can just outline what that is?
Yeah, I'd say it'd be a broad spectrum, but, but we'd be, we'd be looking for guidance through the Queensland environmental offset policy. And that states all the various mechanisms that you can use to deliver koala offsets, particularly in using financial offset money. So it can be planting, it can be road infrastructure, it can be anything that produces a net benefit to koala populations in the Shire that we wouldn't ordinarily do as part of our general business.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask a question? Just one question as to legal cost. Do we have an idea of what this case has cost the ratepayer?
No, I don't have any final costs on that, that's something I can provide council after the meeting if you like. But there's still some invoices coming in because we've been continuing to negotiate on the infrastructure agreement and deed of delivery. So it's not quite finalised, but I can certainly give you an update cost of what we have now, and then a cost at the end. While we finish it.
Yes, question. With regard to the noise mitigation measures for the proposed residential area behind the shopping centre, is that something that would have to be put in place regardless of whether that became residential or the developer decided to change where the residential element may, may go with some sort of a land transfer, perhaps to mitigate that, the, the chances of noise with, with regard to residential amenity?
It's probably most critical for residential, if residential develops on, on those lots behind, which is what the new Noosa plan proposes. But nevertheless, some acoustic measures would still be required, I would expect, for commercial development as well to protect the amenity of, of future offices and staff working in them, if, if that was to be proposed on those lots.
While we're asking questions, Madam Mayor, at the heart of this motion to, to settle, this recommendation to settle, is a, a very good arrangement whereby the staff negotiated koala offsets in exchange for the transfer of land for a transit centre to the Noosa council. It's a very complicated arrangement, could you just take a bit of time to explain that, please, for the benefit of those listening at home and to help us?
Certainly, and it's, it's not something straightforward that we see every day. But Stockwell have essentially offered a lot as part of this subdivision to council, at nil cost to council. And that lot is proposed to be used for a future transit lot, which has long been part of council's planning for the Shire Business Centre for an integrated transport facility. So they've offered that in lieu of doing the offset for koala habitat, for clearing koala habitat as required by the environmental offset legislation. So the transit lot in itself doesn't achieve a conservation outcome, it doesn't provide an offset in a direct way. So council, in looking at this arrangement, would need to set aside monies to do that offset planting that Stockwell would other be, otherwise be required to do. So essentially, the transit lot is coming to council. Council then use the monies that they would otherwise use to purchase that transit lot to put towards doing the offset to replace that, that compensatory planting for koala habitat.
Thank you. Thank you, Kerry. I ask another question. A lot of work's been done to get to this point, appreciate that, and a lot of it's internal to the site. But what a lot of the community will be concerned with is the amount of vegetation clearing. And it says in the report that you've minimised the amount of clearing that will take place on the site. Could you explain what people will see as they drive along Walter Hay Drive? In terms of what you've been able to, what will be retained there for the, I think it's called mature regrowth forest? That we all, we all love to see as we drive along Walter Hay Drive.
So what will be retained on site as part of the subdivision and in the long term will be a 10-metre-wide strip all the way around the perimeter of the site. And that is protected by environmental covenant on title. So that will maintain and protect that vegetation in the long term. So essentially, the business centre will not be viewable from Walter Hay Drive. It will be a tree entry into Noosa as we currently have, so that will be maintained.
Kerry, can you just also add about the park-like setting internally with the vegetation?
Yep. So internal to the site, there is, there are large areas of site that will need to be cleared upfront with the subdivision to manage the stormwater control. Predominantly around lots 10 to 15 down in the southern section of the site. But along Walter Hay Drive, what the applicant has agreed to do is provide 10-metre-wide strips to all the commercial properties as landscape garden beds. So that area will be lost as part of the stormwater management controls, but they will plant back in 10-metre-wide strips, six metres in front of the residential. On the larger lots, lots three and seven, they will be fully retained as vegetation until at the time they make a future development application over those lots. And in, in those areas, the scheme intends that park-like setting. So there'll be groupings of existing mature vegetation that I would expect to see with any future development application of the site. But the, the park-like setting has been achieved by those, those strips along Hoffman Drive and continues sort of that landscape feel of form that exists along Hoffman Drive now.
And one more, if I may. A lot of people have commented how much they enjoy when they're in the current Noosa Civic Food Court looking out through those huge picture windows at the mature regrowth forest that's there. I understand that will be retained at Vista?
Yeah, so that vegetation is already under covenant, and that will be retained in the long term, so it's under environmental covenant. There is planned for a six-metre-wide walkway from the end of Noosa Civic, so those nice big glass windows, to cross that vegetation, six metres wide, over into lot three to provide that future connection, make sure there's pedestrian pathways throughout the developments so people can access the site.
Often, often with the subdivision, roads that are made available or infrastructure made available to council after a given time and handed over to council. In the current civic configuration, there are internal roads. Can you just give us an element of what will remain internal road structure and what will become council's responsibility after, after the completion of the subdivision?
We're just going to bring up the subdivision plan on the screen for everyone to have a look at. But essentially, what will become public road is the Hoffman Drive extension. So Hoffman Drive currently is a public road from here down through to that residential development here, there's a turnaround. That will be continued as a public road, so that will come over to council as roads go.
With a connection to Walter Hay Drive?
With a connection to Walter Hay Drive. So that follows the existing listing pattern. And that's importantly, because we're in some benefit to the network on that road. The other internal roads will remain private. So they will be privately owned by Stockwell because they really only serve the, the development itself. They don't provide any external functions. And so they will remain in ownership of the landowner, which is lot one, essentially, that will be under lot one. And then access easements in place to ensure other lots have access around those private roads.
Thank you, that was my next question. Thank you.
So that means they'll be maintained as well by council or by the ratepayer?
There's a staff recommendation on page 15, which is agree to settle the appeal generally in accordance with the following conditions.
I think that's the one, subject to the infrastructure agreement, deed of agreement, agreed, agreed delivery, arrangement being executed prior to the matter going to court, planning going to court.
I'll move it. Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, I'd like to compliment the staff and the applicant on all the hard negotiation and goodwill that's gone into reaching the agreement at this point. This has been, this is a highly significant decision. It's probably the biggest planning application decision that this council will have to make, and maybe the largest and most significant any Noosa council will have to make. It's the final phase of this, it's a subdivision application. There will be more individual applications to come before the council after this is all signed off on. The work, I compliment the staff and the applicant, the work done to address the bushfire hazard issues, the acoustic issues, the pedestrian and road access issues, and also the efforts made to maximise the amount of vegetation retained on site. The generosity and quid pro quo that has gone into having that land set aside for a transit centre for the council in return for koala offsets, it's a very useful and valuable arrangement. And also the retention of a 10-metre-wide strip of mature regrowth forest along Walter Hay Drive to ensure that the subsequent developments won't be visible from Walter Hay Drive.
Look, it's been a long time coming, you know, I think it's somewhere in the centre of 20 years since this, this first appeared in, in Noosa as a major development. The shopping centre's been built and some, some adjoining lots have been undertaken. But the final land development of, of this space is finally here. And I think it's the, the future development of, of commercial opportunity here in Noosa, as well as some, some, some great residential opportunities that have been foreshadowed in the, in the planning scheme going forward. So I commend staff and I commend the developer on, on finally reaching a mutual agreement. It must be remembered that, as councillor Wilkie alluded to, this is only the on-ground facilitation of pathways and, and roadways and the like. Each of the individual lots that have been allocated here will of course have development approvals sought by council in the future for, for the developments that will take place upon those parts of land. But bushfire management has been successfully negotiated. The koala offsets and the, and the koala provisions are successfully negotiated. The easements and all of the provisions for, for the look and feel around the, the the development have been, have been sorted. So I think it's a great outcome for, for the future development and the future growth of our commercial spaces here in the, in the Shire.
I concur. I, I do too think this is a great outcome, a win-win. I'm excited at the prospect of a multi-use centre with green space and pedestrian and bicycle facilities. I'm excited about the handover of land to council to use in future as a transit facility. I'm satisfied that the exchange for the land gift would cover the 1.13 million cost of buying off site koala offsets as required by state guidelines. More importantly, this development will also create more jobs and housing for our residents and deliver missing infrastructure. And I think this is a big win and comes at a time when this community needs it the most. And finally, I'm excited that there's actually been genuine consultation between the developer and council, and this must continue. We must continue to find ways to work more effectively with developers in a non-confrontational and collaborative way because if we don't, the legal costs will break us. I therefore support the recommendation to settle the appeal.
I'm, I'm not so enthusiastic as my fellow councillors. I'm not a huge fan of the Noosa Civic the way it is. And it is with a heavy heart that I will vote to settle this appeal and give the green light to these subdivisions. The property is privately owned and zoned for this type of development, so it can't be stopped. And it, and from what I understand, this is the best deal that council can get with this, with the developer. This morning, I walked through the site and I recommend that everybody else do the same and say goodbye to this, that, that area because it is gorgeous. I do not believe the population of Noosa can support the proposed developments, and I doubt it will attract visitors from outside. And I, I, I worry about it becoming another Noosa Civic. And for example, I was asking one person who had shops in the Noosa Civic, in Gateway Drive, and in Noosa Village. And I asked her where she made the most money and her reply was in Noosa Village. She said that working in the Civic was, quote, "a soul-destroying place to work", unquote. And the strongest drawcard for the Noosa Civic is air conditioning during the summer months. I say to Stockwell, in the future businesses going into the new development, do not rely on zoning for your customers. I believe the Civic and the junction have squandered the advantage of zoning. Much retail has now moved to the industrial and evolving enterprise zones, and this is an evolution, I believe, that Noosa should support. I urge council to hold any applications in this new development to the strict and highest standards of the Noosa plan. We must not let the architectural mediocrity of the Civic further spread this subdivision. I believe the best hope for the success of this new precinct is to comply with the Noosa plan and hopefully revitalise the, the retail experience in Noosa, in the Civic.
I thank councillor Wigner for his views, and it's probably a difficult one for councillors who weren't in the last term in that the change that is proposed in the new Noosa plan to this site are immense. So the environment that may currently be like any other supermarket environment at the Noosa Business Centre by breaking the site up into this subdivision will change it to become the true business centre that it was always envisaged to be. But it's changed in a way that prepares us for the future. So we've heard already that the staff have been able to negotiate a deal whereby we offset the loss of regrowth vegetation that was always identified for development through not only one win of over a million dollars to offset about nine hectares of regrowth vegetation having to be cleared, but also to put in place a regional transit centre. A transit centre that will be the hub of the response by this Shire in years to come to congestion in our coastal area. It will allow the redirections of intra-regional transport so that they don't need to go along gimpy terrace. So they can park and ride and catch in the future the electric bus or the unmanned, unmanned vehicle into the beach. That's just one of the benefits.
The diesel stops here.
You know, a million dollars' worth of koala infrastructure can probably produce more net benefit than the nine hectares that were there. If we use that money wisely, it will aid in the conservation. Offsets are the last resort, and they're, they're last resorts in cases like this where the long-term planning is always envisaged that it would be put to a different use. But let's look at some of the other gains that this subdivision will hopefully facilitate. Lots 17 to 19 on the subdivision are in the character and framework plan for high-density residential. This was one of the initiatives under the new Noosa plan to make the Noosa to make the Noosa Business Centre a business village where people lived, recreated, not just shopped, where business could occur in a dynamic environment and where, hopefully, what we will see is a form of affordable housing. It won't be as guaranteed of that last outcome as it would have been before the state government moved the goalposts. But I'm, yes, I am a bit little and twisted. But there is another, six lots down the bottom in the character and framework plan identified to use as kind to the innovation zone. And this is really important because what that, those six lots down the bottom southeast corner are looking at is, it's about identifying land suitable for new and emerging uses and activities to provide opportunities for innovation and creativity and facilitate new and emerging uses and activities that cannot readily be provided for other parts of the local government area, provide for uses and activities to promote knowledge creation, entrepreneurship in industry, research and development, science and technology. So those six lots were in the character framework plan there to allow the diversification of the economy for things like the startups that might be in the Pridgen Digital Hub that might go from six staff to sixty staff by the time these lots come on. These are the range of uses. And the new main street that has been designed into this subdivision is really important. It will be something that creates character. It will allow a range of uses as well as the, the public open space and the business precincts in there actually encourage shop-top housing or office-top housing. So it's meant to be a more diverse, a more vibrant and a, a more socially beneficial as well, economic beneficial site for this community. So it has been a long road. It is unfortunate, there has been some onsite environmental losses, no doubt about that. But I believe when we look at the overall public benefit, it is in our interest to settle the appeal the way it is proposed.
Thank you, councillors. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate staff on all the hard work that they've undertaken to get us to where we are today. It hasn't been easy and it's been ongoing for many years, so I'd like to congratulate and thank them. The conditions put forward that Stockwell has to adhere to are extensive. And I acknowledge that the council and the applicant have been in negotiations, as I said, for a very long time. It is very heartening, I concur with councillor Lawrence to that as a council, settlement can be reached without the burdensome and significant costs of, should the matter proceed to court. So I wholeheartedly support this and I'm excited to see what can be done here. And thank you.
Yeah. We've come in at the tail end of this decision, so we can only base the decisions we make today on what we've been given. I'm excited moving forward that hopefully, as we, as a Shire, agree on this decision today, that the visionary space that's taken up by new business that we can attract to this area, hopefully through the diversification of opportunities, will we have a great uptake and will see us into a vibrant future where we can attract new business, young entrepreneurs. My hope is for a great future where Noosa moving forward can be innovative and provide opportunity for an exciting outcome for all our visitors, all our business people, all our future endeavours in this Shire. I do acknowledge the environmental loss at this stage, but any development comes at a cost and it seems that that has been well-measured and negotiated for positive outcomes. So thank you, everybody.
Yeah. Look, I'd like to acknowledge and respect all the views round the table. I think it's important to say that this outcome, mediated outcome, continues the good work of Noosa council staff and its reputation for getting successful outcomes, defending appeals successfully and also getting good outcomes through effective mediation. So I congratulate staff on that. As pointed out by councillor Stockwell, and in, in, as an assurance to councillor Wigan's concerns, what is, this is a subdivision, next stage is a subdivision, and what's likely to occur on here is unlikely to be anything like what's gone before. And the subsequent applications will continue to be held to the requirements of the Noosa plan. If the site's broken up, as councillor Stockwell said, we've got about six lots for innovation and new enterprise. And there's more residential, there's business precincts. And also at the heart of it is a village mixed-use area. It's meant to be a village heart, which will have cafes, showroom, shops and shop-top residential there. It's meant to be in a park-like setting. So the key will be how, how that takes, takes shape. But I'm certain I wouldn't be the only one around the table doing it utmost to ensure that that, that happens. Thank you.
All in favour of the motion? You may leave. There are no more items on the agenda. I declare the special media closed. Thank you all, councillors.